I'm going to call this meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council to order. Ask that the city clerk call the roll, please.
Councilmember Budge will be a few minutes late. Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Here.
Mayor Sander.
Here.
Thank you.
And if you could read the Metro Cable TV television announcement, please?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, June 18th at 9:00 a.m. and again on Monday, June 22nd at 6:00 p.m. A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
All right, very good. We are going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and that will be followed by a moment of silence. Bob, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
And if you'd all join me for a moment of silence, I would like you to reflect on the role of racism in our community and ways that we can work to reduce it. Okay, thank you very much. We are going to move on to presentations of which are unscheduled and unadded. Is that correct, City Manager?
That is correct.
All right. We are going then to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time by completing and submitting a speaker card to our city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called up to the podium by the mayor at the point on the agenda when the item will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep comments of three minutes or less and to state their name and community residence. Under provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. So I do want to note that if you are attending a meeting via Zoom or telephone and you would like to speak under public comment, we can only accept those at this point by email in advance and we have several that have come in today under those circumstances. So I encourage you to use our email and that would be cityclerk@cityofranchocordova.org and please get those to us 5:00 p.m. before our next meeting, which would be Monday, June 15th. So that being said, I think we have at least one card turned in and we have four public comments that have been distributed.
That's correct. And our next meeting will be on July 6th.
Oh, sorry. July the 6th.
We do have four individuals who submitted public comments in writing before the deadline today at 5:00 o'clock who are not able to join us. Those individuals are Maria Martinez, Clayton Breeze, B-R-E-E-S-E, William Walker, and Tara Colvin-Bach. Each of the council members have received the written public comments. There are also copies in the back for those of the public who are interested in reading what they submitted and we have one public comment card as of right now for Darrell Langwell if you would like to come forward.
Welcome, Darrell.
Thank you, Alan. Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. Darrell Langwell, Vineyards Neighborhood. With all the turmoil that's going on right now and all of the things that are being said about a lot of law enforcement, I've done a couple ride-alongs with Rancho PD. I've attended the Citizens Academy. I've attended several neighborhood watch meetings with the police officers and when I've been with those, everyone that I've seen has acted very professionally. I've seen them intervene with neighborhood, neighbor disputes. They acted in a very professional manner. They were calm. They diffused the situations in a very calm and easy manner. And I think, in my personal opinion, everything I've seen of the Rancho Cordova Police Department and the sheriff's deputies in this area, they've been exemplary and I think they deserve all the respect we can give them.
Thank you very much for that, Darrell. I would just comment that in my own experience, my own personal experience doing ride-alongs over 20 years now, I think, I could second your comments exactly and completely. Any other public comment?
We have no further public comment.
Okay. Thank you for noting those that were submitted. Council reports. Item 7 on the agenda, Mr. McGarvey.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. The mosquito vet control board meeting will be tomorrow. We found a dead bird in our neighborhood and I called and they came and picked it up. I'll find out tomorrow if it was positive or not for the West Side virus. We have enough things going on with viruses as is, so here's another. I'm waiting to see what happens in how Folsom Cordova Unified School District, school plan is going to be this coming year. I know Elk Grove is going to have two kids in school for two days and then they'll be home for the other three for the week. I'm waiting for a vaccine, maybe by the end of the year, hopefully. It would be here sooner rather than later because it's something that if we can get that, maybe we can start getting some of the regular things, especially for kids. I know a lot of them are having a hard time with their education, having to do it at home and sometimes parents can't stay, can't be there. So it's very hard. Some of the other council members I know have received some, I have received over 100 emails about the officer who did some negative things with a 14-year-old teenage boy. One of the emails that I have here, I just read one little sentence on it. "I want you all to know that shameful that this man is still in the force of this city." And he is not. We are a contract city and with our contract, we can tell the sheriff if we have someone who is not doing what they are supposed to, someone who isn't working for us, we can have them replaced and we did have him replaced. So this is something that I think people don't understand. There are over 120 contract cities in California. Those are cities who are incorporated, but they have contracts with county, they have it with sometimes organizations. I know in LA County, there are 45 contract cities. So when you have a contract with the sheriff like we do, then in the, in the contract, you have the right and the to say, this is how we want it done. This is how many officers we need and this is how we're paying for. And if we have someone who is not doing what they should be doing, then we have them removed. And he was removed almost immediately. So I think there are some who are still not understanding how things work with our contract city. So I'm just trying to pass on to our citizens that the officer who was involved in this with the 14-year-old teenager doesn't work for the city of Rancho Cordova and hasn't been since the incident happened. So we can, I'll work on that some more to see if I can find some other ways to pass on to our citizens exactly how this is done, how we're a city, how we are working on these things. But like I said, this one sentence is that shameful that this man is still in the force of our city, but he is not. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Bob. Linda, are you with us?
She is logging in right now.
Okay, let's go on to Mr. Terry.
Okay, I'll start with kind of echoing something that Bob was talking about. We had our two-by-two with Elk Grove Unified, oh, I'm sorry. We have not since this happened, but yes, he is right. The plan right now for Elk Grove Unified is that students are going to be on campus two days a week. So basically they'll have half of their students from a classroom on campus Monday and Tuesday and the other half will be on Wednesday and Thursday with special ed and other meetings and things for Fridays, I guess. That now updating our Folsom Cordova two-by-two that we had last week, David, right?
Yep.
Yeah. They have not released their specific plan of what they're going to do. When I explained to their superintendent Elk Grove's plan, they did make it clear that that is not the approach that they're going to take, that they're going to try to have as many of their students and staff back on campus, that their survey were showing roughly 80% of their staff and students want to be on campus and they're going to do everything in their power to accomplish that. But they have not released the plan yet. So anything I'm telling you here does, you know, we don't know how they're going to do that yet and I don't think they've fully come to grasp of how they're going to do that either. But that was the feedback that we received from them last week. You know, I think Bob also kind of hit the nail on the head. I have received a lot of emails wondering why the individual officer had been transferred and what that meant. Yeah, he, he's, he's no longer a member of Rancho Cordova PD, but you know, he still is a deputy sheriff in a different department within the sheriff's department. But like, you know, a lot of our statements have said over time, even though this is a contract city, it is still our responsibility and it still falls on our shoulders to, again, learn and grow from this incident and all of these things that are happening all across this country. I'm not sure I necessarily agree with some of the suggestions and policies that have been floated in other cities for our city, but everyone should be heard and all ideas should be met with, you know, the same skepticism and optimism and due diligence that they deserve. But there are a lot of policy discussions from a lot of different jurisdictions across this country and what may be right for, you know, one city isn't right for another. And so we all need to be mindful of that. And then finally, it feels like forever since we, since we did some sort of city function, PR, anything. So I think I was the first one today to go out and grab a gold shovel and do our virtual groundbreaking of a pool that they've already dug the hole in there, putting rebar. So, so they're, they're a lot further down from a, from the groundbreaking by now, but it was nice to go out there and actually see the progress that is being made, to throw on the hard hat. And I got to put it on first and then Maria had to wipe it down with Clorox and everything. So, so hopefully everybody got to, got to do that today and got out into the nice, the nice fresh sun. So that's it for me.
Yeah, I followed you there today, Donald, and apparently you, you put the dirt in entirely the wrong position. So I had to clean all that up and I excavated about half the poolside by myself there. So thanks for, thanks for your assistance. Hopefully Garrett was able to finish the work I started.
I was, I was there.
Or Bob as well.
I did, I did. Two scoops of dirt, so there's no way to blame me for where that was and the pile was there when I got there. I was the first one to go there today.
There were rocks in that soil. That wasn't, wasn't just pure dirt.
There were some big rocks in there.
You gave the gold shovel?
Yeah, the golden shovel.
I was there when he was making the pile. So that poor hammerman, you know, was the one that actually went over there and tried to make a pile and figure out where the, the right, I watched him put that whole thing together. So, you know, he, he was setting up his cameras as I walked up, so.
Very good. Linda, did you get to the shovel today?
So you all left me with a dirty moment, a clean shovel, a pile of dirt. And I have to tell you, if you want dirt, you better come over here and dig in our yard because I got way more rocks than they do there on the river. They've got nice, I mean, you're right, they got rocks, but it's workable soil. That's why we have hops and orchards and whatnot along the river. And, and quite frankly, David, that is the only thing of city business that I have done all week with the exception of, kind of as Donald alluded to, fielding, emails, answering questions, just kind of making sure that information gets from where it needs to be to where it needs to be. So that's it for me.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Gatewood, Vice Mayor Gatewood.
There he is.
All right. So, yeah. So I got to finish up the mess you guys made. So I was the last one to dig holes. You guys did a terrible job. Don't give up your day job. It's all on me, though the hat no longer fits my afro, so we have to work on that. We need bigger hats and stuff for me.
Okay, Garrett, we're, all right, Garrett, we all want to, we all want to comment on the fact that you are looking like a movie star from the 70s or 80s or something or other.
I, I think at this point I'm dynamite and I'm feeling it, feeling the groove and now I just feel like I can't cut it until the craziness stops. So, I don't know, it's getting better by the day.
Well, you wear it now.
Yeah, it looks good, man. Keep it. The STA, we were able to cover number three on gaining political votes for money. So hopefully that'll put us in line to get 10 to 15 million dollars for White Rock Road. And so we're one of three. We got beat out by Sacramento by one vote and it's only because the guy that we were working with didn't understand how the thing quite added up. And every time they called for a vote, he kept changing his number. And so at one point I had won and then he changed his number again and then I lost because you had to choose between five projects and you list them five, four, three, two, one. Well, he listed Sacramento as number one, Rancho as number one, but he listed Sacramento as number five on the first vote and that had us winning. And then they said, are you sure you understand? And then he changed it to number four. And I was like, dang it, can we go with the first one because I won on that one? And so we're right there, right there on that level.
So they keep counting until they get the result they want?
Yeah, pretty much. That's how, that's how we work it. But I did get in number three, so I'm pretty proud about that. And then they are, now, now we're in the, the hot decision of whether the county supervisors are going to pass measure eight, which is sales tax increase on everybody. And they're doing a bunch of polls and whatnot to try to figure out what's going on there. The other thing, I went, I went because I was very curious, which is probably a good and a bad thing. I went to, and so did David, actually. We went to the protest for Rancho Cordova just to see how it was and we had, I don't know, 15 to 75 people out in front of county and in front of the city hall doing a very, very good protest, which is, you know, just flyers and information. And so, you know, I did steal all the kids because they happened to be like most of the kids from our neighborhood and brought them inside for snacks because it was hot outside and I didn't want them to have that issue. And then, and then lastly, I had been fielding hundreds of emails because everyone has something and I'm glad Bob kind of put it out there about that. And then along with all the messages that are getting sent around the different cities, I think Rancho is handling it quite well and how we do everything. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. For my own report, I was also present at that march on city hall, which I think was a week ago. We counted about 90 people there, I think at its max. I talked to a lot of, a lot of the people in attendance, substantial number anyway, and saw many I knew and many I didn't know. The discussions were interesting and I think enlightening for the people involved in them. And of course, there were no complications or problems. City staff put out water and masks for those who either needed water or didn't have a mask, tried to keep the event as safe for everyone as possible. And the group then, or at least the majority of the group, continued the march on to the police department where I think they were for, for a little while. I'm not sure what their activities were at the police department, but as I understand it, our, some of our officers gave some of the protestors rides back to city hall. So it appears that everything went very well with that event and I'm, I'm happy with it from all angles. Donald and I did meet with the Folsom Cordova Unified School District and they, they clearly have a significant challenge. A number of kids were probably lost with the shutdown in terms of they went home, they were supposed to log on and they didn't. School district doesn't quite have a handle yet on how many they are, but other school districts in the state are reporting, early on, they reported numbers of 10% of students that sort of went home and then never were in contact again. I don't think that's our situation, but I, I don't know until I, I see some numbers. So I've requested those a couple of times now. I, I think they'll be forthcoming. And those should be of some value to us as a city because we could look neighborhood by neighborhood, school by school and sort of see where the greatest either technology or economic or whatever challenges are keeping those kids from connecting with school. And that's, that's an issue that I think we share in with the, with the school district. There might be something, something we can do to help move those numbers in a more positive way. Because as we look towards the fall, it's unlikely that our school district will have a full normal school year calendar. There's going to be some sort of adjustment. Maybe half the students go in the morning, half go in the afternoon. We don't know yet. As Donald said, they haven't announced or decided, but there's going to be some sort of a modification like that. And in our supporting role in education, I think it's important that we stay as on top of that as we can. I participated in the diploma drive-through at Cordova High. We kind of instigated that actually as a city when we found out that Folsom was doing a two-event graduation or we had a one-event graduation scheduled at Cordova, we kind of stimulated them to do the second one. And the awesome thing about it is that more than 90% of the graduates came through that line to get their diploma. And I think we may have done one of the better jobs in the region, the, the high school staff did one of the better jobs in the region of accommodating those students because they basically kept all the adults safe, they kept all the families and friends in the cars. So those cars were driving by and near where the cars were, there was a stage set up. And on the stage were a school board member or two or a principal. They were all masked, but the graduate was able to gown up, walk across, get their diploma unmasked, get a nice photo on the stage with a Cordova High background. Cyrus was there as well. It was really a nice event and I think probably better done than some of the other schools around. So I'm glad that if we had a small role in that, I'm glad that we did that. And the 90% number was, was awesome. I attended so many meetings, so many meetings by Zoom or virtually, and I've now attended a convention virtually. I was planning to go to the CNU, Congress for New Urbanism Conference, which of course couldn't be held because of the COVID crisis, but I attended virtually, which in some ways is better. You don't have to travel, you don't have to stay in a hotel, you don't have to get a bad night's sleep, you don't have to eat bad food, and you can go to four sessions at once because they video them and you can just play them when you want them to play. And they had social engagements that allowed you by Zoom to basically, it's almost like you're, you know, sitting at a reception somewhere and choosing people to talk to or talking to the group. It was, it was actually not a bad experience. Different than going to a regular meeting, you don't have a lot of the little small offhand conversations that are so valuable, elected official to elected official, but you were able to accommodate a lot of the more technical learning here in a way that might be better than a regular meeting. I attended meetings of the GSAC Board, the SECOG Board, the California League of Cities Rev and Tax Committee, probably some others that I'm, I'm forgetting about. I've also been spending a good deal of time working on youth sports in Rancho Cordova and even broader than that and trying to find a healthy, safe way back to youth sports. I was kind of disappointed with the county office of education and the county superintendent of schools. They issued a very nice glossy report talking about how schools could come back in the fall and it's, you know, a 50 or 60-page document. They had maybe, I think, 60 people on the committee to write this. That includes all the superintendents of all the school districts in Sacramento County, but they only had a single scientist, a single medical advisor was there, and that's the county health officer, whose time obviously is being spent everywhere right now and in, and in demand everywhere and had very little in the way of contribution to, to all aspects of this. So it's a pretty document, but when you look for sports in there or extracurricular activities, it basically says, we don't know and these seem dangerous. And there aren't many guidelines given for what's possible or not. And there's really no discussion in the document, I would say, an adequate discussion of management of risk, which is absolutely necessary. I'll just give you a simple example. You can't treat a kindergarten class the way you would treat an eighth grade class. The behaviors are different. What you're going to be able to do in terms of cleanliness and separation are different. And if you can't acknowledge that upfront and you're forcing yourself into saying they must be equally safe, we're going to have problems or we're fooling ourselves one, one way or the other. So I think we need to get really smart about how we do this pathway back to school, pathway back to youth sports. I am really cheered by the approach of our school district, particularly to the extracurricular activities, including sports, because they fully understand the value of that in developing the full kid and particularly on the Rancho Cordova side and inspiring our kids to do well in school and be motivated to school because of what they can do in sports and extracurricularly. So I'm pleased with that. I'm hoping we can find a good solution for that moving forward that works for, works for everyone. We don't just get mired in, mired in bureaucracy.
Any other question about the Folsom Cordova Unified School District meeting that you went to? Has anything said about the arts, the music, anything like that? Or is that something that's been put aside and they don't know how they're going to do it or if they're going to do it or?
That county report said no band, no music, no chorus, just no theater. I think it said you could do theater, theater training, theater education if everyone was six feet apart, wearing masks, but because, you know, you're speaking loudly, you're interacting with each other, they sort of said, just, just say no to that. And I don't think that's a reasonable response, given everything else that's going on at this point. They need to be more nuanced than that and they need to be able to balance the risk.
Well, the music, for a long time, people, a few people understand that that's something that helps people with math.
Yep.
And it's just, it is, it is, you know, music is part of the arts, but it's also, as I said, math. It is something, it's just, you see that first cut is the arts and the music and that shouldn't be done, but then you're going to do it, I don't know, but maybe there'd be some way to have music, even if you're trying to get six feet apart or something like that, just use the gym or something.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I, I think you're completely right about that. Education doesn't just happen in a classroom. Education of our youth happens across the broad spectrum of activities and people are motivated and stimulated and grow in all of these extracurricular ways. It's not, certainly not just sport, it's not just math, not just music, but it's a combination of all of these things that create great citizens and educate people. And you can't just lop one off and not expect to have some significant repercussions elsewhere.
Yeah, Bob, my impression so far with our two-by-tues, Elk Grove is really the first one to announce a plan of any kind. They were the first to close and they're kind of the first ones that are coming back, mainly because they have year-round school. But year-round school is supposed to start in mid-July, is now starting beginning of August. All these things that are being brought up, I just don't think they're there yet. I don't think, like, they're trying to figure out how, what does it look in the classroom? How are they going to do that? And, you know, I, they'll get to these things, but they, they were so, I don't want to say unprepared because nobody was prepared for this. But to come, you know, the, the plan to come back, I guess, and every school district's going to have their own way of doing it and it sounds like Folsom Cordova's not going to look anything like Elk Grove. We haven't talked to SAC City to hear what their plan is yet, but you're really in the infancy phase. As far as I know, Elk Grove was the only one to release a plan and Folsom Cordova's comment was, we're not doing that. But what they are going to do, who knows? And, you know, when you talk extracurriculars, I know there was some, some talk about, you know, conditioning already and some other things that they might try to do safely, but whether or not, you know, there's going to be, you know, fall sports of any kind, I don't think anybody has been able to make that decision yet. And, you know, David, to your point, you know, yeah, that, you know, they made this committee and tried to come up with what they were going to do, but, I mean, they still haven't figured out, how do you put kids in a classroom and keep them six feet apart? Because I can tell you as a school board member, that's pretty much impossible. You can, I've heard of plans of take out every, you know, all of the bookshelves and everything else and do something like that. And I've heard smaller school systems being able to pull that off because it's one or two schools and they can, you know, store it somewhere else. When you have 90, you know, properties to do that with, like, the, the fundamentals of doing that are just totally different. So as frustrated as we all are and we want to have a So as frustrated as we all are and we want to have answers today, I can tell you from a system and institutional level, it's going to take time to make all these decisions.
Yeah, I think you nailed it right there, Donald, because in the private sector world, I can see it happening. You know, where there's not such a mass number of campuses and students and labor agreements and contracts and all sorts of other things.
I didn't even get into that.
Yeah, I mean, where you got all, where you've got more flexibility. I'm certainly seeing, you know, the private schools respond and be able to say things like, "Yeah, your kid will be at school every day." Because we're spreading out on our campus now. We're not, we're not just going to use part of it. We're getting all over the place.
Yeah, but to do that, I mean, yeah, it was 80 campuses in Sac City unified. I mean, you just, you can't just, you can't just take all the bookshelves out. Where are you going to put them? So, yeah, okay.
I will say, the League of California Cities, the Rev and Tax Policy Committee that met last week, we had a couple of really heated debates. Probably the most important one from our point of view is the split role. The split role is a proposal to modify Prop 13 so that commercial properties can be reassessed on a regular basis instead of holding their original value and only increase 2% per year the way residential property is. So there's a big debate about whether we should carve out commercial properties and reassess them on a more regular basis. And the league ended up voting, that committee ended up voting in opposition to that by about a two-to-one ratio. And that's a, it's a perennial issue. It comes up often. It probably has more momentum this year than it has had in previous years. But I just wanted to make you aware of where the league was on that.
Is there any legislators you can think of right now that are trying to push that?
No, I can't name them off the top of my head, but if I did a little search, I might find them. But, yeah, there's certainly some legislative intent to pursue this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And the problem is, of course, in the details. Like all other things in human, human operations or life, the devil's in the details. And you might agree at the top level, yeah, commercial property ought to treat that differently. But as soon as you get into how do we do that, all kinds of stuff happens. And at this particular time, probably the most compelling argument was, well, you're going to increase rents when you do that because now you've got more property taxes, so the landlords are going to charge more rent. And who ends up paying the rent? Small business by and large. So this is a tax on small business is basically what it, what it looks like when you split the role. And ways around that have not, certainly weren't found in anything, anything we saw. All right. Any other things from council? I don't see any hands up, so Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think most of the events have already been mentioned, so I won't go there. I just wanted to take this opportunity to say goodbye to a member of our police team. Lieutenant Chad Lewis, who's been serving as our assistant chief since July of 2017, has taken a job with the city of Elk Grove and would be leaving us at the end of this month. So I wanted to take this opportunity to not only thank him for the amazing job that he's done for us, for this community, but also wish him well on his future endeavors and the work that he has ahead of him in Elk Grove. You know, when we had this discussion earlier today about police and the comments that Mr. Mayor, you made and Mr. Langwell, I have had a chance to work with our police team very closely for many years. And I have, and with that, I've also had a chance to work very closely with Chad. And once you get to know him, you understand that, you know, the true meaning of professional attitude and response in the community, the way that he conducts himself, the way he conducts business. And I've also, one thing that I've always said about Chad, that he's somebody with a very big heart, with a deep care for the community, somebody who has truly given a lot of himself to serve us and serve us well. So thank you, Chad. I just wanted to be sure that I take this opportunity. I know that it's, you know, this is a difficult time for law enforcement. And as has been mentioned, we, but also an opportunity for us to learn and grow from not only our local incidents, but also what has, what is happening at the national level. But when I get to work with our chief and our assistant chief and some of the attitudes that I see, I have great hope that we can listen, we will be able to work with our community, we will be able to understand, and we will be able to make the necessary changes to continue the great service that we have been providing to our community. So with that, I wanted to give this opportunity to both our chief, Chief Adams, and also assistant chief to come up here at the podium if they wanted to say a few words. I think it's, it would be a good opportunity for us to just collectively say thank you to you and acknowledge you publicly.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and council members. I'm going to yield the floor to Lieutenant Chad Lewis because it's his time and I don't want to monopolize it. But I will say that I've been blessed to have the short time with him. He came in behind me and has done a phenomenal job. And it's been a pleasure to reconnect with him as he goes on to the next phase of his journey in his career.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, City Manager. And good evening, Mayor and council members, near and far. I'm going to keep my comments relatively brief because if I say too much, I will, I've got a lot to say, so I think if I get carried away, I'd be here all night talking about all the things that we've experienced here in this wonderful city over the last three years. But suffice to say, I have grown considerably as a person and professionally with our time here together. I am certainly better for the experience. I certainly hope the city is as well. A big part of what drew me down to Elk Grove was the parallels that you can draw between the city of Ranch Cordova and the city of Elk Grove. So it's been a wonderful experience here. My three years was just about up in a couple of weeks anyhow, so I knew my time was short. And so learning everything that I had here at the city, I wanted to continue that effort with a like department. And so that was a big part of what drew me down to Elk Grove, and I'm excited for the future, but I will treasure the experiences that we've had and learn from all the lessons and the experiences that we've had together. So thank you very much. Thank you for everything.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your good work here. It is much appreciated. I understand now you're going to, you're going to Elk Grove and you're going to take all of our great experiences and secrets and give it to that community that's been chasing us for a while, trying to catch up. So it's, I think, and they haven't. So I think it's just fair at this point that we, you know, bid you farewell and good luck and please help them out. There are a lot of good people down there, and they've been following our lead in a lot of ways, and now you can add to that. So congratulations.
Let us know when you want to come back, okay?
David, I have a comment.
Oh, go ahead, Linda.
Okay. So, yeah, I can, I think there's several people in Elk Grove who are squirming right now based on your comments.
Really?
Yeah, right. But Chad, seriously, this is one of those really bittersweet moments that we've experienced. And certainly having you grow and accomplish here in Ranch Cordova has been an absolutely wonderful experience. And while we are incredibly sad to see you go, we have to be very proud of you for getting a superposition in Elk Grove, just the way we have been proud of other city staff who have come and learned, learned their trade, learned their profession, and then gone off to, to help other communities grow the same way we've been blessed to grow here in Ranch Cordova in the last 16 years. So it's a hail and farewell, as they say in the military, and congratulations, you certainly deserve it.
Very good. Thank you, Linda. All right. Anything else?
That's all that happens to me.
Okay, we're going to go on to the consent calendar. Item number nine on the agenda. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Are there any items from 9.1 to 9.8 that a member of the council wishes to pull?
During none, I will move consent calendars 9.1 through 9.8.
Second.
Motion made by Budge, seconded by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items consist of matters deemed routine and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. I'm going to open the public hearing on these items. Are there any speaker cards?
No, there's not.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Any items the council wishes to pull? Seeing none.
During none, I will move approval items 10.1, 10.2, and 10.3 with the note that it's being continued to the date of July, a date certain. And congratulate Metro Fire on a wonderful, you can literally say it's the best-looking fire station that's been built around here in almost 100 years because it's actually almost the only fire station that's been built around here in almost 100 years.
It is nice looking. And that continuance on 10.3, I think, is noted on the agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes it is. Okay, motion made. Is there a second? Seconded by McGarvey. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to continue on with public hearing items. Item 11.1 is on our agenda, but it has a note of continuance.
Move to continue item 11.1 to July 5th.
July 6th? July the 6th? Okay, is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood.
Yes.
Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Thank you.
I bring this to item 11.2. If the clerk would read that item, please.
White Rock Center Major Design Review Project Number DD 9940 located at the southwest corner of White Rock Road and Lu Young Drive.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. There we go. The applicant is requesting a major design review for two 15,840 square foot light industrial warehouse buildings with associated office space, including parking, yard area, lighting, and landscaping. It's going to be on 2.87 acres. If you recall, this was continued from the June 1 city council meeting. There are a couple of reasons that council wanted it continued. Council raised concerns with the number of driveways along White Rock Road and that White Rock Road is one of the main corridors to the future Rio del Oro specific plan. Council also raised concerns about the future light industrial tenants entering on White Rock Road driveway entrance. And council requested one set of the project plans, and council directed the applicant to provide more architectural details on the building. So the project site is located on the southwest corner of the White Rock Road and Lu Young Drive. You can see there's existing businesses all the way around it. And here's a existing street view. It's taken from White Rock Road, and you can see Lu Young off to the, what's that, left or right-hand side? So looking at the first concern with the number of driveways, reviewing the White Rock improvements. So future White Rock Road improvements, repaving, and right now they're going to be in the, probably this year, coming up into next year, installing facilities for future Signal and Lu Young, Lu Young Drive. So the White Rock Road median and Signal at Lu Young Drive and Fitzgerald Road are scheduled to be installed at a future date. So any driveways along White Rock Road within this block between those two stars are going to be right-in, right-out driveways. So the project driveway, as it relates to the distance to neighboring existing driveway and future White Rock Road construction, is in general conformance with the Sacramento County Improvement Standards. So the two stars are for the future signals, and then the three orange arrows are the driveways. So the two existing driveways on White Rock Road is the main driveway, which is in the center of the block. And then there is an existing driveway just west of that driveway. The proposed driveway for the project site, you can see that just west of the star at Lu Young Drive. In addition, the applicant provided the reasons for the proposed driveway on White Rock Road, and that stated on page two of the staff report. They stated that in order to accommodate emergency access vehicles, so turning into the west driveway, they would likely to be a smaller footprint. It would impact the adjacent parcel to the west with increased traffic. Access to the easterly parcel would require all vehicles to cross the west parcel. And the, per the original map, there are three access points along White Rock Road, and one of the access points is for the proposed drive, project. So the second concern was future of the light industrial tenants entering on White Rock driveway entrance. At this time, the applicant states that there is not a current tenant, but they're anticipating a showroom-type user. Would that be tile or carpet flooring? So there is one driveway access on White Rock Road mainly for customer-employee access. The revised site plan, where we added a condition, was access from the existing driveway, and that would be used mainly for customer-employee access. And that also provides interconnectivity within the area and in the future access from the westbound traffic. So people would come onto Lu Young Drive from the east, heading west, and they would take a left down Lu Young and then access the project site. And in addition, there's two direct access locations to the enclosed yard area, and that's off the existing drive aisle and off of Lu Young Drive. So the council requested one set of project plans and to provide more architectural details on the building. So the project plans that were submitted were for each building, Building A and Building B, and they also included a colored landscape plan to be more clear where the landscape ended up. So right here's the building elevations. This is facing White Rock Road and side elevation. That's facing the interior property line. And this is the west elevation facing the drive aisle to Building A and facing Lu Young Drive for Building B. And then, of course, the rear elevation for the buildings, and those are going to be facing the rear, rear storage yard. So the applicant provided some perspectives. So, the applicant provided some perspectives because looking at that flight out, um, elevations, uh, you can't really tell the offsets. The perspective gives you that visual look. So, this is building A from White Rock Road. And off to the right is the existing, um, driveway. Now, this perspective does not show the connection, but there will be a connection from that parking lot to the existing driveway. This is building B from White Rock Road, and off to the left hand side would be, uh, Lu Young, so that sidewalk off of Lu Young Drive. And then this is also building B and storage yard from Lu Young Drive. Uh, that block wall would have, um, vines growing on it, so it'd be eventually a green wall. The landscape plan, uh, they provided a twenty-five foot wide landscaping along White Rock Road and Lu Young Drive. And then a ten foot wide landscape along the existing driveway. This plan does not show that connection, again, that connection was at a last minute, they had some, um, discussion with the adjacent property owner. So, they provided a variety of trees and shrubs and ground cover and the required, uh, shade area and enhances the appearance of the site. And again, the vines are proposed along that six foot high masonry wall to deter any graffiti and the appearance as a nice green, uh, landscape. And staff recommends that city council find the project as follows to be in compliance with CECL guidelines, section one five one eight three, and adopt a resolution approving the major design review for White Rock Center ninety-nine four zero with project plans and conditions of approval. And if you have any questions, and the applicant is here with, um, with the architect.
Okay, thank you for the staff report, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Do we have any speaker cards perchance on this?
We do not.
All right, council members, what do you, what do you think, what's your pleasure? Linda, do you-
Question?
Any concerns in particular?
Okay. Um, it's, no, just a, just a question. Um, and, uh, and a compliment to the very handsome landscaping both on White Rock Road as well as on Lu Young and the, um, and the masonry wall on Lu Young. It will really, um, really be an asset. It kinda goes back to our original, uh, industrial office park, uh, design where you can have industrial buildings, but then you would have enhanced landscaping so that it would create a really nice, uh, uh, visual appearance, which, of course, as we know, is so important because this is gonna be a main access to Rio del Oro. Question about the, um, large unused areas in the rear. Are they going to be paved? And we assume they're going to be for outside storage. Um, that's for the applicant, and then a question for, um, um, staff as to whether there would need to be any further approval, like an administrative approval of, um, high pile storage or whatever.
An applicant representative is here?
Yes.
Do we able to hear the question?
Uh, something about the yard?
Yeah, um, come on down, introduce yourself. But the question was, uh, what sort of material treatment would the yard be given?
Yeah, the, the yard's gonna have hard surface, either asphalt or concrete, and it is completely screened with a block wall and, uh, solid metal gates. So, there's no, you can't see anything from the street or the parking lot.
And you're gonna plant vines and have irrigation to support a green covering on the walls?
Yes. Yeah, we're basically landscaped on all four sides.
Okay. Uh, you're here, did anything else you wanted to add to the, to the presentation? No?
I think June did a great job for us.
Okay. Linda, did that, did you get that answered, did you get that answer to your question?
Yes. Bye, David.
Okay, and she had an additional question for staff?
Yes, they, anything that would be stored would have to be screened completely, it cannot be above that wall.
Right.
So.
So, this will not be like an auto recycler situation where there's racks extending up beyond the wall that everyone gets to see?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here. Okay, any other council comments? I'm also really satisfied with, with the landscaping in particular, and the explanation for the, for the driveway seems appropriate, so good job on that. Any other comments, council? Hearing none.
Okay.
No more public comment, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we are available for a motion.
And I will approve the, uh, recommend approving the resolution, uh, approving major design review for these two buildings. Find that the environmental document is adequate and appropriate and, um, that we approve their major design review.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McGarvey, I'm sensing a pattern here. Okay, uh, roll call, please, clerk.
Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, that brings aside number twelve, regular calendar items, and item twelve point one. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Discussion on the TruMark at Cassis Project.
Okay, on this item, I'm gonna recuse myself because I live too close to the subject property to participate in the discussion. I'm gonna suggest Mr. McGarvey run the meeting from this point, unless Vice Mayor Gatewood, you wanna attempt it by distance? Sort of at your discretion, Garrett, as Vice Mayor.
No, I think it's good to do it there.
Okay. Bob, if you could just run this part of the hearing, that would be great.
Over, Bob.
All right, on staff, would you, um, give us, uh, your report on this?
Yes, good evening, members of the council, Darcy Kellert with the Planning Department. All right, here we go. Before you this evening will be a discussion on the proposed TruMark at Cassis Project. There will be no action taken tonight on this particular item. The intent is to discuss the existing tree ordinance language to the orchards, or existing tree ordinance language related to commercial orchards, and review the proposed land use mix for consistency with previous council direction. A little bit of background for a refresher, um, in June of two thousand and eighteen, the council held a workshop where they saw a proposed land use layout for the Cassis Project. Um, as part of that discussion, the different outcomes of that in terms of what council wanted to see on the site was a desire of a mix of housing types, larger lots along the river, small commercial or office space, and the council was amenable to removing the two hundred and forty very low and low income units, which is about ten acres based upon the quality of the project. On the screen before you, on the right side is an overview of what the Cassis site looks like, as you could see. While it is vacant, it does have a rather large old commercial orchard on the northern, um, portion of the property. So, a little bit of background on the Cassis Project is it is forty-one acres within the Folsom Boulevard specific plan, and it is designated residential mixed use. It's also known as an opportunity site within that plan, so what that means is that it has, based upon its location, it's got the greatest potential for new development or redevelopment within the, um, western boundary of the city. It's also envisioned that the site would have a mix of residential, commercial, or office component that complements the neighboring residence. Additionally, um, it's stated in the specific plan that this type of development would take advantage of direct access onto Folsom and, um, Folsom Boulevard, and the proximity to the future light rail station was a benefit. Before you on the screen, and I'll walk you through it, and I apologize that the quality isn't that great, it's hard to get an odd shape on a slide like this. This is the current proposed tentative subdivision map and the layout, so we're currently looking at a proposal of two hundred and forty-five units. The housing type mix, as you can see along Folsom Boulevard at the bottom of your screen, the darker brownish color, those are town home lots that are roughly about fifteen hundred square feet in size, those are all attached units. And later on in the presentation, you'll see, um, some elevations of what those might look like. Moving up the screen in that yellowish-orange color, that's our detached cluster lots, those are about twenty-nine hundred square feet, and those are detached, um, like four pack type units. Then moving further up, you'll see that there is a detention basin, there is a park site within there along the western edge of the property, so along the left side of this, of the image you see on the screen, those are what are being referred to as estate residential lots. So, an average of ten thousand eight hundred square foot lots, and those run along, um, the river. And then to the east, that really light yellow color, those are the small lot, villa lots, so those are detached, single family, about four thousand square foot lots. So, throughout this, um, subdivision, previously, as you did see before, in terms of access to the site, is access is off of Folsom Boulevard, and also an access to the east into the existing, um, residential neighborhood that's over there. Um, on the next slide, I'll go into more detail in terms of the parks and passeos. Um, so, as you can see on this particular layout, um, what you do see is a mix of housing types, so a higher density along Folsom Boulevard. It gets a little, uh, less dense as you move further north on the project site with some larger lots along the river. What you don't see, um, is you don't see any sort of commercial or office component as part of this proposal. The applicants did, um, commission a market study, and the market study indicated that commercial or retail just wasn't viable at this site. You know, due to some vacancies that we have along Folsom Boulevard in terms of other commercial areas, it just wouldn't be, um, a site that could support some additional commercial.
Darcy, can I, uh, uh, I don't know if somebody wants to answer this later, um, but can somebody remind me, the last study that we had was, what was it, one point five million excess square feet of retail space on Folsom Boulevard? Does that sound right, or is that something that economic development can speak to later?
Mike, I might be able to speak to that one later, um, one point five million seems a little high, but we can probably track down that number.
Okay.
So, the next slide does, does, um, capture sort of the overall landscape plan, you can see in the middle of the site, there is a one point nine acre, uh, neighborhood park. Um, and just to note, the project itself didn't trigger the need for a park, but after discussions with CRPD, um, the applicant and staff and CRPD felt like this was actually a good amenity to add into the project. You can also see that there are various passeos that connect from that park site to the west into existing neighborhoods. There is an existing, um, easement that is being preserved for future use that would go to the, to the west. There's also a, um, river trail that run, runs along the back of the estate residential lots that will provide, um, an overview of the river. There's a couple different overlook areas that, uh, people could walk from internal over to that trail to be able to look at the river. There's also a trail connection to Rod Bowdre where there's an existing, um, pedestrian easement that runs along the back of some of those residential lots as well. There'll be some landscaping, obviously, internal, along the street frontages, along the lots, and along Folsom Boulevard. In terms of the home elevations that are being proposed, um, so unlike what we typically see with our subdivision maps, usually later on down the road, they'll come through with a design review for their master home plans. Uh, TruMark has decided to seek entitlement approval for, for all of their elevations at this time. So, what you see on the screen before you is currently what is being proposed. Um, there may be some additional changes to that, but the top part of your screen, those are the proposed attached townhomes that would be along Folsom Boulevard. And then on the bottom, those would be the detached cluster lots. On the next screen, you'll see at the top, those would be the small lot villas, and in the bottom, those are currently what is proposed for estate residential. So, keeping in mind, we're still, you know, middle way through this process, so in terms of what you see on the screen, that could change. These elevations aren't set in stone, this is really just to give council an idea of the different housing types that would be built in here. So, now I'm gonna turn the presentation over to Albert Stricker, Public Works Director, to talk about the tree ordinance.
Good evening, members of the council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And along with this property, the applicant proposes to remove approximately three hundred trees, largely consisting of a former orchard that was walnuts and pecans, and replacing those trees with about five hundred new trees. So, this action prompted us to take a closer look at the existing tree ordinance. And so, I'll give you a summary of the work and direction that council has provided staff to date, and, um, also provide a proposed amendment for council consideration. This clicker is not working, if you wouldn't mind, thank you. Thank you. So, chapter nineteen of the Tree Preservation Code was adopted from the county upon, upon city incorporation, and in two thousand and seventeen, council directed staff to make various revisions to provide added protection for the city's urban forest. Among those included protection for residential trees larger than twenty-four inches, protecting commercial trees larger than twelve inches diameter. There are also criteria that do allow removal of protected trees under certain conditions, and in those cases, mitigation is required. And there are a couple options for mitigation, one of those is a mitigation of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per inch of tree that is removed. For example, for a twelve inch diameter tree times a hundred and sixty-five dollars, that would be one thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. Um, or they can mitigate by replacing with twelve trees. Mitigation, however, in contrast, for dead, diseased, dying, or hazardous trees is tree per tree. So, if you remove one big tree that is dead, diseased, dying, or a hazard, you can replace it with one smaller tree. The ordinance in practice has been quite effective in protect, adding additional protection to the city's urban forest. And, but we have come across on the Cassis property with the removal of their three hundred trees that results in a mitigation of a pro, over six hundred thousand dollars would be the cost for them to mitigate the onsite trees. We have looked into options, and the option we would propose for council consideration is that the ordinance could, uh, provide a different, uh, different regulations in the case of existing or current orchards. And staff would recommend the following addition to, to the language that would address both the Cassis property as a former orchard and also as an existing orchard for existing, the soilborne property is an existing orchard that would be affected by this. We would modify subsection four to the code, section nineteen twelve one twenty E, which with the following language, we would say that trees proposed for removal are or were a part of a commercial orchard. For purposes of this subsection, "commercial orchard" shall mean fruit or nut producing trees planted and grown for commercial production. Each removed tree shall be replaced with at least one tree.
I'm kind of assuming that we're not gonna be putting more, um, orchards in. Because I think it would be, and we have so many trees as you go through Renssperdova now that are not being harvested. They just, you see them as you go on the ground, and they just stay there until the next year, and then they have more again. So, it would be much more fruitful, excuse the pun, but to have the, uh, trees which are very, uh, helpful to, um, give us the, the shade that we're looking for. And that would fit right into the, uh, design that they're putting into these homes.
Thank you. And with that, I'll hand it back to Darcy.
Thank you, Albert. So, in summary, what staff is seeking tonight from council is to provide, um, staff with any additional feedback on the proposed land use mix. Um, we're currently in the process of preparing the environment- in the process of preparing the environmental document for this particular project. So if there is some direction or feedback on proposed changes, we would like to hear that now so that that can be folded into the process moving forward, and then provide direction on any potential amendments that were presented on the tree ordinance this evening. That concludes my presentation. We do have various representatives from TruMark on the phone that can also answer any questions council might have.
Yeah, anyone, Linda or Donald Garrett?
No, I'm good.
And I'm good too, Bob. I really, I'm very supportive of the project. It's going to represent, it's going to represent this part of town very well, very handsomely. It provides, it provides a tremendous mix of housing types. It does have transit-supported housing along the Boulevard. It gives us our estate lots on our only stretch of riverfront I love, you know, personally, because I've lived in that area for so long and helped to preserve access for an off-bicycle trail, I mean, an off-road trail to connect on the parkway. I truly appreciate the connectivity to both the west and the east. And I had one suggestion. When I look at the detention, excuse me, the detention basin next to the neighborhood park, there was some indication to begin with that they were going to do a fence around the detention basin. But I suggested to one of them that they go and look at the park in Stone Creek that is between Corvina and Zinfandel, commonly called No Name Park because it has no name. But it is a detention basin adjacent to the drainage channel that runs all the way through Stone Creek. And it doesn't have any fencing. It does have a couple of picnic tables. There is a, it's got a pathway through it. It's got some trees. There's a delineation that Albert can describe. I mean, I don't need him to, but he can describe the delineation between where the city's responsibility for the drainage channel ends and the park district's responsibility for the park property takes over. We adopted that probably, it could have been eight or ten years ago. And to me, this is just a similar situation where this detention basin can become a part of the active park. And in the wet months, it will serve as overland release and fill it with some water, and it'll be fine. And then the water will go away, and they'll have extra parkland. And I would definitely suggest that it not be fenced off. So that's really my only concern, my only comment about this. Otherwise, well, you know, I'm probably one of the outliers who would choose some different architecture. I definitely see that in all the architecture they've proposed, that there is elements, number one, they're beautifully detailed, and number two, there are elements of all the things that seem to be really popular with home buyers today. So it looks like a winning project. So I, as I said, my only comment would be, let's not fence off the detention basin. Let's make it a part of the park.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Garrett, you have any suggestions?
No, I would just tickle pink on the project itself. I like the new, I like pretty much every part about it. I'm excited to see it go forward.
All right, very good. And it shows in our schedule here, the recommendations to receive an update on the Mark and Cassis project, no action will be taken. So I just wanted to say thank you for the information and for the, Albert, thank you. So with that, I think we'll go on to the next item twelve point two. Would you read that, please, City Clerk?
Yes, let's get the mayor back in the room.
If we gotta.
So with item number twelve point two, as the mayor is rejoining us, the subject for that is master license and encroachment agreement for deployment of a citywide fiber-optic network with SciFi Networks Rancho Cordova LLC.
Thank you, Bob. So we're on twelve point two?
Yes.
All right. Staff report on this item. Albert?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And this evening, I'll present for your information and consideration a master license agreement for deployment of a citywide fiber-optic network. The goals for the evening, well, to be to inform the council of opportunities proposed by SciFi and the obligations that would need to be carried out by the city, and also to request council consideration to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with SciFi for installation of a citywide fiber-optic network. So a key SciFi proposal and obligations is SciFi would install a citywide gigabit-speed internet network that would be connected to every residence, business, and institution within the city of Rancho Cordova. Installation would be via micro trench technology. This is essentially a two-inch wide trench by about twelve inches deep. They would also be installing, the brains of the network would be held within three about twelve-foot wide by thirty-foot-long shelters, plus a few dozen cabinets around the city. The completed infrastructure would be leased to internet service providers, and the infrastructure would, on an ongoing basis, be maintained by SciFi. But they are not an ISP, so they would be leasing that infrastructure out to internet service providers. There would also be a future smart city agreement between SciFi and Rancho Cordova that would provide, amongst other things, for fiber-optic connection between various of the city's buildings and potentially infrastructure as well. Complete buildout is within about five years of contract execution per the agreement, and breaking ground would be within approximately two years of execution of the agreement. SciFi has requested that the pavement life performance warranty be reduced to ten years, which would require a future code amendment. In the current language for the pavement life performance warranty, it requires that the warranty be in effect until the width of the roadway receives a structural overlay, typically considered about a one-inch asphalt-concrete overlay over the roadway. So they've requested to reduce that to about ten years. Based on the relatively diminutive size of the trench, we anticipate that those ten years would be sufficient to cover any anticipated defects in that trench. We think the risk is relatively low.
Albert, you said citywide. So that's every residence, every business. I think I heard you say that.
That is correct.
Just wanted to clarify that for anybody who's watching and listening to this.
There are some stipulations in the agreement that allow, for certain reasons, that they don't cover particular, a particular resident or business or institution. And those considerations include if that location doesn't desire to be connected to the service, and also if the cost is found to be prohibitive for SciFi. However, based on our conversations with SciFi thus far, they don't anticipate that there are any significant areas of Rancho Cordova that would be prohibitively expensive.
So I would hate to see them, for example, avoid the lower income areas, perhaps Rancho Cordova, saying there wasn't enough income potential there if they were doing the rest of Rancho Cordova.
That was a significant concern of staff as well, as we were negotiating the agreement with SciFi. SciFi has assured us that, based on the information that they have, this should not affect any major neighborhoods. And they also are not aware at this time, based on their preliminary evaluation, of any particular properties that would not receive service. However, they won't know for sure until they do detailed engineering. But based on what they know so far, I definitely share that concern. They've told us this will not affect major neighborhoods. A few photos of their operation. So the micro trenching, as I mentioned, is about two inches wide and twelve inches deep. It's installed essentially with a large saw that moves down the road. The preferred location is immediately adjacent to the lip of gutter. It's followed immediately behind by they install the fiber-optic conduit and cable immediately behind the trench, and then they fill it with grout, a grout backfill. So this is a close-up. That's on the right side of the photo is the lip of gutter for the concrete gutter pan, immediately adjacent to that. That's the about-two-inch-wide trench. And then just to the left of that is the existing asphalt-concrete of the roadway.
What does a, I didn't see it in the presentation, what does a connection actually look like? So if they're going to connect to the house in the background, how do they, how do they do that?
The way that they do, their installation will run a leader up to the property line. So it's the conformance between the right-of-way and the property line. And then if that homeowner elects to receive that service, they would be contracting with an internet service provider. And that internet service provider would run the connection from the property line, right-of-way interface, out to their cable box and into their home.
Okay, so, so this company, SciFi, is going to put these in all of our streets, and then individuals who own the property, or the business, or the home, are going to pay to make connections to that fiber that's in the street?
It would actually be the internet service provider would be through either an ad or promotion. A homeowner would find out about it, just like I did in my house in Rancho Cordova. I researched different internet service providers, identified one that I thought was suitable, and they actually, the same, their network was stubbed to my property line and didn't run all the way to my house in Capital Village. And so when I called them up, they had to come out, and they ran it the rest of the way to my house.
Okay.
So it would really depend on that internet service provider. And I'd also like to say that Scott from SciFi is online with Zoom with us this evening, and would also be available to discuss any detailed questions, and could probably give you more information on some of the details like that than I can.
This is a question about the micro trenching. Like, so you have to go from this trenching to individual homes if it's requested, and going to the businesses, whatever like that. So all we're doing is putting in this trench right now, the two-inch trench, and how deep is it? Is it about two inches?
It's about two inches wide and twelve inches deep.
Okay.
Relatively small.
I'm just thinking about some of the things that were done when they were putting in fiber optic and some of the things with the phone company when I worked for them. So this kind of looked very familiar.
There would be smaller cabinets, similar to what a phone company installs. There would be a few dozen of those surrounding the city. There would be, from the trench in the road, there would be a leader that runs out towards the property available for an internet service provider to later connect up to the home. And in addition, there would be three larger shelters. These are about twelve feet wide, about thirty feet long, and about eleven feet tall. There would be three of these located around the city. The SciFi has requested the city's assistance in identifying locations. However, the city is not required to find locations. We're a partner in helping them to look for potential locations. SciFi has requested the ability to consider locations on city hall property based on a large-scale view of city properties. We have not identified any locations on city hall or any of the various city properties that could be utilized without having a significant impact on aesthetics or security depending on the location. But we have committed to taking a closer look with SciFi as we move into the planning and engineering phases of the project.
Of course, these would have to be attractive structures in some way.
Yes.
Not just metal buildings with exposed conduits and stuff, yeah.
We would look for, we would be coordinating closely with the planning department and with SciFi to ensure that they are either shielded or otherwise aesthetically a part of the environment that they're installed in.
So David?
Yes, go ahead, Linda.
Okay, so the dimensions that Albert has described, ten by eleven by thirty, it's basically the same size as the very large regional transit transformer boxes.
Yep.
Along the light rail.
There might be some locations along light rail.
Three, yeah, three of those sprinkled out somewhere. It would be an intrusion in residential. But you're right, we have other locations. Albert, can I ask you my question again about the question I asked you this morning about what's, I don't even know what to call it. What's like the strength of this? Everybody talks about 4G and 5G, and you said a gigabit, and I'm sorry, I'm not into giga's and quartz and stuff like that. And so I really don't know what a gigabit is.
This is different from the 5G technology, which is a wireless technology. So this is installing fiber-optic lines throughout the city. And the typical high-speed broadband, for instance, what I have at my house is about eighty megabits is what I have at my house. This is a thousand megabits, so this would be over ten times faster than a typical high-speed broadband that most residences have within the city of Rancho Cordova.
Linda, this is going at the speed of light. So what you're dealing with is not speed stuff. So this is so fast that it's light blinking across a very thin glass fiber that your system gets across. So this is blinking at the speed of light, and this is so much more secure and stable than wireless signals that it's unheard of. And to have this in our city is a blessing. I don't know the, first of all, thank you for coming into our city and building. The model, I can't, as the IT nerd of the group and the one that runs the tech company, I'm just tickled that they're coming into our city, and we're willing to, basically, all they want is a year head start, and I am excited that we're going to be able to have this option. And so, yeah, you're going to want to upgrade your internet at your house to this, because that means you're going to have three times the speed if you need it. All the Netflix movies, everything, instant when it comes down. Two hundred, three hundred, four hundred meg across the network, easy.
Well, I appreciate that, Garrett. I knew you would, I knew you would have a technical answer, and I appreciate that. The, it makes me wonder if we actually have any areas in the city at this point that don't have broadband access, and so hopefully this would cure that. I feel very sorry for the fact that Colorado County and then places up the valley, up towards, within the Secoc region, but up towards Chico, all have to, we're all working on just actually getting broadband access. And of course, as we all know, this is a major hurdle to learning. How to, you know, if they can't, if they don't even have dial-up, how do they ever, you know, nobody can do distance learning. David, I'm thinking, and Albert has described the way in which people would access this, I'm reminded that probably twelve years ago, when AT&amp;T came through Stone Creek and installed small vaults in the ground for AT&amp;T networks, that then... That then, an army of AT&amp;T salespeople descended on the community, knocking on the doors, wanting to sign everybody up for AT&amp;T. As opposed to Comcast or whatever else it was they had. So I can envision the same sort of thing would happen with all the ISPs that purchase rights to this system. But I do believe it's a good thing. Agree with you on.
Go ahead Albert.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify also that it's gigabit, both upload and download speed, which is, is a critical part of infrastructure for any data intensive business. So the, the city has obligations according to this agreement as well. The city shall provide a single point of contact to expedite permitting, which would be paid up to $90,000 per year, funded by SciFi on a time and materials basis. The city, as I'd mentioned, will assist SciFi in citing three shelters. And however, the location is ultimately the responsibility of SciFi to find those. The city shall also provide a one-year exclusivity from entering into similar agreements. This doesn't stop existing service providers that are already functioning within the city of Rancho Cordova to continue about their regular business or even extend, expand their regular business. However, the city would agree for one year not to enter into an agreement similar to what SciFi and staff have discussed so far. This is a 30-year agreement with two 30-year extensions. So the entirety of the agreement would be up to 90 years. Benefits to the city, as we've already discussed, is gigabit plus internet service to residents, businesses and institutions. This further establishes Rancho Cordova as a technological leader in the region. This is certainly a source of economic development. Having high-speed internet is a great draw for businesses. And it's also a great draw for employees with, which helps to attract great employees to businesses and for retention. And also the smart city agreement, which could provide high-speed connectivity between various city buildings and infrastructure are various, various benefits. The recommended motion this evening would be the staff recommends that city council authorize the city manager to enter into the agreement. If, if so approved by council, next steps would be that SciFi would begin planning and engineering, breaking ground in approximately two years. Staff in SciFi would negotiate the smart city agreement. And staff would return for council consideration of a modification to the pavement life performance warranty, which would be a code amendment. I'd also like to mention that Scott Bradshaw from SciFi, I believe, is on the Zoom call tonight. If city council would like any, any answers from SciFi.
David, can I have a question?
Sure, go ahead Linda.
Okay, so, so this is an agreement with the city. But is there, is SciFi proposing any consideration for our service partners such as Metro Fire and the Park District?
I think we could bring on, was it Scott?
Scott Bradshaw.
Yeah, thank you.
And Mayor, this is, this is the city attorney justice. If I might, Albert, expand further on the answer that you gave about the very substantial attempts and work that was done in the course of the negotiations to make sure that this agreement provides access to these services to as many, if not all neighborhoods as possible. Albert, if I'm not mistaken, the, the place where we did that work is in the definition of primary premises. So we, and we were able to get a few standards in there that really focus on only having technical or major cost issues as obstacles. Not any other issues that would be less equitable. And also extending service to the, the number that we had in, have in there is 95%. So Albert, we worked very hard with our staff on, on the equity issue for the extension of the service.
We see Scott.
Yep, there we go. Thank you, everybody. I certainly appreciate entertaining the, the opportunity for the large-scale investment in Rancho Cordova. I'm happy to answer any questions. I certainly made a note of a few questions and your good selves have raised that. Just would like to add some further depth and clarity too, if I may.
Sure, you can go right ahead.
Okay, so any that I missed, do, do call me out on them and I'll certainly do my best endeavors to readdress them. So one of the reasons for the master agreement, rather than just turning up tomorrow morning and pulling a permit and off we go, is that SciFi is investing into the city for a long period of time. It's tens of multi-millions of dollars that we're looking to invest in the community. And, you know, we really need a long time to, to ensure that the, the model is actually sustainable. Because it's a 100% private investment without municipal tax paid dollars towards the, the network's construction. So having access to the entire city actually allows us, to the point that the mayor was making in regards to different areas and low income areas. We actually want to create a ubiquitous footprint. So the network on both sides of every street, on every single street throughout the entire city, passing every single particular building. Whether that be a residence, a business, a church, a community center. We ultimately would like to have this infrastructure pass through those buildings to remove that, that infrastructure digital divide. From SciFi as a developer, we actually, we look at this from a, from a costing perspective. Our ultimate goal is to have the most advantageous network for the littlest capital spent. The reason being the lower the actual project overall cost, the less we actually have to charge the wholesale of the network to ISP to then in return sell their services to the constituents of the community. So when you put it into context, the, for the, for the lower income areas, they typically, in various communities, are smaller in size and they're more compact rather than the large affluent homes. So from a developer's perspective, from a capital outlay, it's actually more efficient for SciFi to construct past those lower income areas where I may pass three homes compared to one more larger affluent home. So it's, you know, it's all about balancing the efficiency and sustainability by passing all the buildings and looking at it as a, you know, holistic capital cost rather than segmentating each community. And that's actually why we, we're not turning up tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM and putting, you know, a spade in the ground, shovel in the ground. We want to ensure not only is SciFi building the infrastructure in the right way, it's built with your community in mind. What is your economic plan? You know, we've, we've heard in the previous conversations about the residential units that are propelling to be built in the various allotted areas. SciFi wants to ensure we build this one so we build it right the first time. So with that said, as we go through the detailed engineering, we have boots on the ground, we look at all your streets. Are there things that we, we are not aware of from a construction perspective? We're also running that in tandem with the economic development side. How can we design the most advantageous network to support where Rancho Cordova sits today? But what is your 30, 40-year plan? How do you wish to grow as a community? Where are you looking to rezone areas to create schools, commercial districts? And those are great things. Residents, five to the home, great. Five to the business, it equally is good. But what SciFi is actually offering is something quite unique. Because we're a neutral organization, we're actually offering a smart city infrastructure. And that means hundreds of fiber strands, those fibers, each fiber strand, you know, is the size of a human hair. Hundreds of fiber strands, both sides of every street, pass every single building, but also passing every piece of street furniture. So from a city municipal perspective, it changes the dynamics considerably. Because this isn't just now about ISP competition. This is very much about municipal efficiency. What locations can the municipality connect to create a highly efficient way of operating you do today into a completely different fiber tomorrow? You know, so city hall to the library, traffic cameras, street signals, lights, public parks. These are the great and wonderful ideas we're speaking with communities at the moment, both on east and west coast. You know, and once we have the development agreement in place, we actually trigger the number of things for SciFi to work on. And we'll be having those conversations with you. Construction was a big thing when you were mentioning in regards to, to the home, which was, you know, the, the question that was raised. SciFi actually covers that entire cost. And so the way it works is from the data center that really gets us to the big cloud in the sky, those, you know, fast speed. So from the, which is called the backhaul connectivity. So from the data centers, that backhaul connectivity into the equipment within the field, all that fiber within the field, to then taking that fiber all the way to a resident's premise and connecting that to the terminal unit, which is that then becomes the location where we hand off to the internet service provider, which is where the customer sees. SciFi actually pays that entire connection. We pay for it, we own it, we maintain it, we periodically upgrade it. Please do.
Okay, David, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, and I think Scott just touched on that question. I have been asked what happens with private streets. And it's a really pertinent question around here now because in the past, it's been our mobile home parks that have had private streets. We haven't had gated communities. But we are now contemplating adopting a couple of potentially gated communities where the streets will be private. So are you saying that you could run past the street side connection? Up the private streets or am I going a little too far?
You're on the money. No, you're exactly right. So, and actually Rancho Cordova is no different. Not only is it Fortun that we're constructing at the moment in Orange County, a community of about 135,000 in population, but also other communities. This agreement under your, you know, under your jurisdiction is allowing us access to the public right of way on a citywide basis, which we still, by the way, will be pulling regular, you know, the appropriate permits to construct within your public right of way. When we get to private street, they're very much like MDUs, you know, those multi-dwelling units, the HOA, unadopted roads. We actually have a team that as we go out, will be identifying those roads. And then we have a secondary team that gains, looks to gain private easement access to those roads. So whether it be a HOA, a private road, an MDU, we actually have a team that goes out, speaks to the appropriate owner of that said road or building and looks to enter into agreement so we can actually build to those people. SciFi's goal at the outset, you know, and dynamics do change, but SciFi's goal at the outset is that ubiquitous footprint. You know, one of, one big reason why SciFi's on hat for a second is to ensure we create a financial model that also works for the internet service providers. So as they promote their products, they're providing that and, you know, on a, on a citywide basis. So it's a very efficient process for them as well.
David, so if you think about what Scott said about running by city furniture, uh, street furniture, connecting city infrastructure. Instead of having, if you, if you think about this from attractive perspective, that means we could have very attractive kiosks throughout town that would have fiber optic message boards on them. But instead of having to have just a big ugly sign, we could have gorgeous little round kiosks in very specific locations that broadcast information to everyone.
I think Linda just endorsed digital signs all over the place.
And, and you're absolutely right. Yeah, community outreach is a huge, you know, if we were turning up tomorrow and saying broadband competition, then you're gonna categorize it and go into the service providers that you already have within your community. And yes, we absolutely do want to bring brand new competition to the community to choose from under these lightning fast speeds. But I'd say it goes back to the smart city point. How do we, when we work with you, this is where these wonderful and I, wonderful ideas come out. How do you want to communicate with the community? What would be your outreach initiative? And things like interactive billboards are certainly things like that where you can say, actually, don't go down Main Street today because we've got this great festival going on and there's just, there'll be zero parking. So it's those forward-thinking ideas, you know, that will really drive the municipal aspect of this. The micro duct, the way to envision the micro duct, as Mr. Stricker was saying, actually, you know, the, the, the picture he showed you with the business card, you know, is an existing footprint in Fortun, Orange County, where we're building to give you an idea of what it looks like. The micro duct, you know, the world has changed in fiber optics. It's actually a empty duct that fiberglass is blown through. So you actually get the latest glass in the community when we connect the community. So there's no degradation in that glass. That duct, to put it into a visual, is no wider than your actual thumbnail. That's on the main street. The side that's going to the homes, the businesses, is no greater than about three eighths wide. That's how small it is in, in today's, in today's world, our fiber optic connectivity. And we actually take one of them, so when we, when we pull the permit and we're building a particular area, let's say, you know, 100,000 feet over a particular number of homes and businesses, et cetera. We actually take a micro duct and place it on the backside of the right of way outside each premise. So we're only pulling that permit once. So when a residential homeowner or occupier requests service from one of the ISP that can now access the network, we can just come along. We've already GPS that information. We know where it is. We can make, make a small hole and then take that same size micro duct, that three inch, you know, three eighths inch diameter all the way to the building, just like with kind of business as well. So that's, wanna give you an idea in regards to scale and, you know, how things have very much changed. But actually coming back to the, that's on Council Lady, Linda's point in regards to future areas. The way it actually works through there is that you can actually promote an area that you're looking to have new plazas, new residents, not a new business area. Because, because it's that empty duct and we don't put the, we don't put the glass in until the air is ready for being served. It would be one or multiple locations. We can actually take that to a telecoms hangar underground, coil up the duct. And you can promote this area saying, as soon as this area is ready for going live, homes or businesses are being built, SciFi can come along, connect into that existing duct, take that duct past all those new premises and then go back and blow brand new glass all the way through. We don't have to tear up the roads, we don't have to splice in the roads. Those days have gone in regards to how this construction works. The network is built on, based on security, diversity, redundancy. This infrastructure is designed as a smart city infrastructure on a citywide basis, on a, on a fully meshed architecture.
David, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
One, what city in Orange County are you working with?
In the city of Fortun, in Orange County.
My wife will be pleased with that. That's where she went to college. The other thing is, how does this compare? I guess the, the, the service leader, I guess, in town right now is Comcast as far as speed. I think my home, I'm getting a gig a second, not getting the gig upload, definitely. But download is supposedly a gig a second, but I don't have a machine that goes that fast. Obviously we'll have those coming in the future. How does that compare to Comcast's highest speed right now?
So, I, I don't care. I should try and think of the best way of answering that question. So as standard, day one, when a service provider over this network in your community provides service, as standard, it will be symmetrical gigabit speed to the home. That meaning 1,000 megabits download, 1,000 megabits download simultaneously, symmetrical. So not asymmetrical where, yes, you're purchasing a gig at best for a thousand downloads, but maybe only having 20 meg or 50 meg going back up. And this is symmetrical. So it's symmetrical to the home, ups, you know, for multi-gig to the businesses. And, you know, and then a different dimension for the municipalities, which is a separate conversation.
Okay. Yeah, and so I guess the, the, the other thing I'll just share for my colleagues sake is, and I, for the most part, I've been a Comcast client for a long time. But I will tell you that in a lot of our neighborhoods, especially Lincoln Village, which is where I lived when I got on council. And I've had the Comcast service trucks come out and, and do work and talk about how they've spliced house into house into house. And it's degraded the, the signal to all of those homes because they didn't run any of this when they first did it. So you're saying that- So you're saying that, that when you bring this into even our older neighborhoods, that it's going to be that same level of speed as, as what you can do in the newer neighborhoods in the business part?
Yeah, so the actual network, um, is ten gig ready to the home. It's just, it's just not a service that really is a position where people can utilize to the home. So the best way to look at it is this is, you know, let's start off with one gig symmetrical service, and let's see how that works out for the community.
I, I, I would say that in a whole bunch of our neighborhoods, um, getting service like that i- is what's going to ensure that we do have distance learning. Because I, I'll tell you right now, there are a lot of places where we don't have cell signals or we have very antiquated, um, signals, e- even from our fastest providers that we have. So this is really great, thanks for, thanks for being here.
And I was also reading early, you know, obviously, we've, we've actually done a lot of research before reaching out to the community. Um, you know, one of, there are a number of things we look for in a community, uh, not just about social demographics today, you know, from bachelor degrees and the various makeups of the community and the age and population. We also, we're looking for communities that invest in their community. You know, has a city won an award and what have they been for? Has the city reinvested money back into the community? And what have they been for? Is it infrastructure, is it outreach programs? I was reading early about, um, I think it was a few years ago when you're doing the air shows and you're looking to get some T one lines to the, to the air shows. And, you know, we're in the space of about two weeks to, to support, um, ticket sales. And that's where the smart city piece comes in. Because when you take that vision that this fiber is high densified going on every single street, that's the way to look at it. Where can't we take this fiber to really benefit the city that benefits everybody else on an unsullied basis? Schools, city staff, if we talk about the current climate that we live in today, well, one, you know, and myself as a fiver of two, experienced the same thing. If you don't have the correct or high capacity on a community-wide basis to support kids at home, connecting to their schools, running multiple streams of video sessions, things do crash, degregations do happen. And that's where this becomes into its ownness. And not only do you have a secure fiber network, you can actually take the network to students' homes, giving them secure connections back into school. You can take the fiber to city staff home, giving them secure connections back into the city. Those are also many benefits of the smart city aspect. So it's not just about broadband competition, it's taking it down to the root basis, building it under a municipal smart city infrastructure that all the residents benefit from, brand new competition, high-quality speed products, attracting new companies, telemedicine companies, home security companies. Because sci-fi, what we do is create that three-layer model. We separate the infrastructure from the network operator from the service provider, ultimately meaning no one strangleholds that environment. Right now, if we call it Comcast for ease of name, they own the infrastructure, they operate the network, and they get to decide what they, what they provide you and at what price they sell. So you have nowhere to go. And on the sci-fi's fiber city, our branded citywide network, three-layer model, it keeps everybody honest, it keeps the network, it keeps competition, and drives healthy competition.
Yeah, thank you. And I feel like you did some research on me because you also dropped the air show, and I won't get into my connections there beyond city council, but that was kind of funny.
Albert, anything you want to add?
Nothing further to add, thanks, Mayor.
Um, I did have the one question about what the stubout looks like. So if you, you pull fiber down most of our streets and you make the nice little trench, um, at that point, are you also pulling out the, the stubs to each property that you pass? So are you going to other side of sidewalk? Or is that stubout just sort of buried in the street? And that's where it's accessed later on?
So the stubout, it, it goes from, from the pavement, so under the sidewalk, to the backside of the sidewalk, and then it stops. So that free end, you know, if you're looking at a pen that you're writing with on paper, that small tube sits on the backside of the sidewalk into the private easement area. We don't want to be pulling the same permit, nor digging in the sidewalk, nor digging in the pavement again.
Okay, so that'll be done at the first phase. You pull it through the street?
Yes, sir.
You, you connect to the back of sidewalk, that, that's the stubout, and you continue on with every property that way?
Correct, and that way, everybody's getting the opportunity, whether it be now or in twenty-five years from now, people will always have the opportunity of connectivity and not be removed from that, you know, won't be in that digital divide.
And will you then contact the, uh, the neighborhood associations or, uh, the private property owners with multiple residences on a, on a parcel in order to do stubouts for all of them?
We'll be doing that, yes, sir. Once we, yeah, once we commence engineering, once, so, you know, subject to hopefully your approval this evening of the agreement, with your blessing of that, and that triggers a number of things, as well as working quite deeply with city staff. And, yeah, we will be contacting all those, identifying our private roles that we haven't already identified, speaking of all the HOAs and all of the buildings to get ahead of the curve.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on this item? Haven't heard from, oh, I see one in the public. We'll make room for you there at the podium. Welcome, Darryl.
Thank you. Darryl Langwell Vineyards Neighborhood. Once again, thank you for listening to me. Uh, the distribution boxes, cabinets that are going to be spread throughout the city, are any of those going to end up on private properties? And if so, how is that property going to be obtained?
Whoever wants to stand aside?
You join to answer that one?
Albert, do you want to do, or?
I'll start at a large scale. Most of those would be located within the public utility easement. There's an existing easement across usually the, um, the outsides of private properties that allows for installation of communication facilities. That's where the majority would be installed. I'll defer to Mr. Bradshaw for additional details.
Exactly, the purpose of the cabinets, we, for the size of your community today, we're looking at approximately thirty-five of them. So there's, you know, it's a nominal number in the grand scheme of the size of your community. The purpose of the cabinets really is to be, from, from our perspective and also yours, is out of sight, out of mind, and to pick up power connectivity. So it's not the case of citing it outside someone's from living room window. You know, because at the end of the day, we very much come as a fact that if people don't like what we're doing, they're just not going to sign up for service.
Yes, sir. Can I, can I follow up and ask what I think Darryl was trying to get at? And this is a question for Albert. Um, would there be situations where we would have to assist this provider in, um, uh, doing eminent domain?
Extremely unlikely. The public utility easement.
I think that's what he was getting at.
Extremely unlikely that eminent domain would be required for this. The most likely scenario is that sci-fi would identify locations on side yards where the front of the home is not looking out at them in relatively low visibility areas.
How big are these other cabinets we're talking about?
I'll defer to Mr. Bradshaw. I believe they're about the size of the typical communications cabinets that you see around the city.
Yeah, approximately about four feet high, three feet wide, two feet deep. So the footprint is of a small nature.
Okay, any other questions?
Are we ready for a motion?
I think we are.
Then I will move that we adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to exit P G N agreement, sci-fi networks, or the installation of a citywide fiber optic network.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember McGarvey stepped out. Uh, Vice Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right.
Welcome to the, welcome to the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I.
Thanks for all this.
If I make just a, a, a comment here, uh, it was on April twenty-seventh when, uh, Mr. Bradshaw contacted the city, uh, asking for information about, uh, the possibility of putting this system, uh, this technology in the city. And, uh, we made the connection on that day. And it's, I'm so proud of our staff and the work that they have done to see us in less than two months that we have an agreement for something that will truly, uh, put us on the map. To my knowledge, in this, uh, region, the only other city that's pursuing this kind of technology, not with sci-fi but with another company, is City of Davis. And, uh, don't know, uh, if any other city has had this opportunity. So thank you, Albert, and city attorney's team for, uh, uh, working. And thank you, uh, Mr. Bradshaw, for your interest in our community. This is, it's exciting to see, uh, this, uh, uh, future technology in our city. And, and this will truly go a long ways to make us a smart city and the goal that we've had. Thank you.
Yes, and you also, thank you. It's been an absolute pleasure. Um, the speed that you've moved out, our dynamic, creative, um, city staff have been, it's been incredibly pleasurable. So again, also in the, in the attorney's office, through to Mr. Strickland, in, in, who works, um, educating himself on the micro trenching, as well as looking at it from a larger scale. It's been very pleasurable, and we, we're very excited to, uh, look at the, the future ahead with the city.
All right, very good. We are going to move on to item number twelve point three. If the clerk could read that item, please.
Fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one financial update report.
That clearly requires a big staff report.
So, so good, good evening, council. Before, um, I turn it over to, uh, um, our finance director, Kim Duran, I just wanted to make a few comments. We, the city does a two-year budget, and this, we are in our second year of a two-year budget. And when we discussed our budget about a year ago, um, and established a budget for twenty, uh, twenty-one fiscal year, it was a very different world. We, uh, we have had a number of things happen, uh, over the course of the last few months, and we did not anticipate a crisis of the magnitude of the pandemic that we've been facing. So obviously, that has affected, uh, our revenue projections and the revenue shortfall that we still find very difficult to, uh, to project. Um, we know that, uh, the economy has been impacted by this crisis. There's going to be, uh, we're seeing some declines that, uh, Ms. Duran will go over. Uh, but, and it's definitely hard to predict. So at this point, we are here to present some adjustments in some expenditure, some cost adjustments. Uh, that mainly means putting some, uh, just very high level. Uh, we will probably put a hiring freeze at this point, not fill any vacant positions. Uh, and also put in some projects, uh, delay some projects until we have a better understanding about our budget and our financial outlook. So that's, in a nutshell, the discussion that we would like to have with you. And with that, I turn it over to Ms. Duran.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Duran, Cara Giorgio, Administrative Services Director. All right, just waiting for it to catch up. So an, an overview of this evening's presentation, um, I'm going to provide, uh, highlights of key city revenues and the impact that we anticipate COVID nineteen having on those revenue streams. We're going to talk about the proposed budget amendments and also take a look at some federal programs that may have an impact on the city budget. So to start, uh, we have heard a lot in the news about the impact that COVID nineteen is having on municipal budgets across the country. Every municipality, every city is going to be impacted differently, um, to the extent to which they are, their revenues come from. And so those municipalities in which we, we will see a more dramatic immediate impact are listed up here on the PowerPoint slide. Uh, tourism-based economies, given that it came to a screeching halt in mid-March. Um, cities that have large entertainment and sports economies, for example, downtown Sacramento with Golden One Center and all those activities coming to a halt and all those area businesses being dramatically impacted by that shutdown. Um, casinos, while we're seeing some reopening, far fewer, um, tables and more social distancing being put in place, restaurants, some bars, and traditional retail. These are all areas in which cities that are dependent on maybe one of these or a few of these revenue sources will be more dramatically impacted by this crisis. The other thing to keep in mind is that we have seen that COVID nineteen, this downturn that we're currently in, is unlike any other recession or downturn that we've experienced in our lifetime. Um, it is really typically a recession, we start to see a gradual decline. We can begin adjusting, um, to prepare for it, and this was literally falling off a cliff. And a Friday Fed statement issued said that it's an extraordinarily uncertain path to recovery. So we are just beginning down, um, this journey. That said, um, I'd like to highlight a little bit of what makes Rancho Cordova different possibly than some of its neighbors. Uh, just because the city next door might be saying their budget crisis is going to be, um, a certain extreme, doesn't mean that crisis is going to impact the City of Rancho Cordova to the same extent. We're not necessarily more immune or less immune, but we're different. And there's just some things to keep in mind. Uh, the first of which is that we do have a well-diversified tax base here at the city. We are not dependent on any single large revenue source to fund our budget and any single large tax generator. And we are also not dependent on tourism or an entertainment economy, conference travel, so on, to, um, fund our general fund. User fees are not a large percentage of our city budget. So many cities that have a full-fledged recreation, parks and recreation programs are being very much dramatically impacted by COVID nineteen inability to offer those programs and classes. Um, so the fact that we don't have that exposure does help us. Hotel occupancy here in the city, um, we do benefit from having a large government travel base. Many of our hotels here in the city have longstanding relationships with state and federal agencies. We have our Cal O E S headquarters here, so we do tend to see some continuing occupancy at our hotels. And then the other thing to keep in mind, many cities have been struggling for years with their pension liabilities that continue to grow and dominate a large percentage of their budget. Uh, the City of Rancho Cordova does not have that same struggle. We have some other, um, components that I'm going to talk about in a minute, such as revenue neutrality. But however, our pension liabilities are very manageable and small in comparison to some of our neighbors. So the first, I'm going to highlight a few of our major tax revenue sources. And the first of which is our largest tax revenue source is property tax at thirty-two percent of our general fund revenue budget. The fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget is eighteen point five million. Uh, we do not anticipate any impact to the next upcoming fiscal year tax rule. And that is a result of just this delay in the, uh, the assessed value calculation. Our assessed value role was actually calculated probably several months ago before this downturn even occurred. The next item is sales tax. Um, at twenty-seven percent of our general fund revenues, we had initially anticipated a budget of fifteen point six million. Our revised budget is about fourteen point three million. Um, current estimates anticipate about an eight percent downturn from original projections. And some of our changes in consumer spending habits are expected to impact sales tax. In addition, a greater amount of sales tax is coming from online, which goes to the county pool. And overall, we believe it's going to take about three to five years, uh, to recover from this current crisis.
Kim, can I ask a question about this slide?
Absolutely, yes.
The, so we had our estimates in January. The number on the left at fifteen point six million, that's the last time you came to see us? Or this is, the, this is the new, this one on the right now is the number that you showed us a few weeks ago?
Yes, so the fifteen point six million is the current adopted sales tax budget for the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, this was based on estimates from a year ago at this time, when the budget, this two-year budget was adopted. Before COVID nineteen, I would have answered that question and told you that we would have exceeded that fifteen point six million. Uh, so we were, you know, on. So we were, you know, on track to do much better. Since then, we've seen obviously a dramatic downturn. We're anticipating a dramatic downturn. And right now, our current revised estimates put us at 14.3 million next year.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to transient occupancy tax, a much smaller share of our overall general fund at 7%. But one of our revenue categories that is going to be most dramatically impacted, our fiscal year 2021 budget, again, that was put in place a year about a year ago from now, was 4.23 million. This anticipated the opening of the new hotel and some additional revenues. This revenue source has really suffered dramatically in the past couple of months. Overall, we're anticipating approximately a 35% downturn next fiscal year. And the reality is that we don't believe TOT will resume to normal levels until a COVID-19 vaccine is in place. And just the first bit of data that we actually have gotten out of some of these revenues, this was the April 2020 TOT, we saw was down about 70% from April 2019. And so that impacted the city because we have a revenue sharing agreement with the county for certain hotels in the annexation area that impacted the city's revenues by about 63%. Just to give you some idea of the extent of this crisis. And then overall, that equated to about a $222,000 decline for one month. Another revenue source, utility user tax. Again, a smaller amount of revenue, 6% of our general funds, and a smaller impact overall. But again, a budget of 3.65 million was originally anticipated. We are revising that downward to 3.38 million. And this is really because of the anticipated continuing decline in utility usage at businesses where workers are telecommuting or closed due to COVID-19. We saw energy consumption hit a 16-year low in April. And we just don't know what the impact is going to be of these ongoing business closures and reduced operating hours. Investment income was a category that we were feeling very optimistic about just, you know, a few months back. Interest rates were on the rise. And very abruptly in March, when COVID-19 occurred, the Fed cut interest rates to zero, which means that as our city investments are maturing over the course of the next fiscal year, maybe interest rates, investments that we may currently be earning 2%, approximately 2% on, will be reinvested for, if we're lucky, 0.3 to 0.5%. So again, we've revised our estimate downward by about $350,000. As the city manager noted early in the at the beginning of this presentation, we are still very early in this crisis. We're still trying to understand the full impact that COVID-19 is going to have on our revenue streams. And there are a number of other revenues that we're going to continue to keep an eye on and monitor over the coming months that are listed on this slide. I don't necessarily need to highlight all of them right now, but just know that as we continue to monitor how our various programs, our facilities and so forth are going to be impacted, these are other revenue categories that may need to be adjusted downward in the future. Any questions on revenues before I move on to the expenditure side?
Okay, go ahead.
So, the on the expenditure side, our adopted budget for this upcoming fiscal year is 57.3 million. The revenue reductions that I just walked through come to about a 6% reduction, 3.35 million. And so we are bringing forward a proposed budget amendment of that same amount, 3.3 million. That would bring our amended budget down to 53.95 million. So as we look at areas of our budget that we could look for budget reductions, like I mentioned earlier, every city has some struggles. Some cities have pension debts. We have revenue neutrality and we do have some debt service for city facilities. That amounts to about 19% of our total budget. And what that means is that really 19, that 90% of our budget, we don't have a lot of leeway. We don't have the ability to reduce expenditures there. So that remain the remaining amount of our budget is kind of allocated with 42% of that going to public safety and the remaining 39% coming from all the other city departments and programs. And this slide is just another way of looking kind of at that same information, but how major categories for how our expenditures are allocated. And what this really demonstrates again is that to make a meaningful impact on reducing our expenditures in our budget, we really need to be looking at the the large purple section, our operating and contract costs. So the proposed budget amendment that is before you this evening would postpone the filling of vacant and newly added positions. The impact would be that the second floor reception area would remain closed. And this would also delay the adding of two additional patrol officers to our CPD. We would freeze market adjustments to employee salaries and benefits, reduce meeting and conferences budgets due to the anticipated impact of COVID-19 on travel and conferences. Again, we feel that this is probably going to happen naturally. It may not have much of an impact on overall the staff attending, still being able to attend these things virtually. We believe we will see reduced costs from fewer community events while the COVID-19 pandemic is in place and those restrictions remain. We believe we'll have reduced contract services from the anticipated slowdown in some areas such as building inspection. And we are recommending the postponement of certain non-essential capital projects that are funded by the general fund, which means some of our facilities and IT projects. Beyond the general fund, as Stacey Delaney mentioned during her overview of the Community Enhancement Fund, we will see a significant downturn next fiscal year and possibly beyond with our Community Enhancement Fund revenues. We're going to see an impact next year with our street revenues due to decreased demand and overall slowing of the economy. Gas tax SB 1 revenues, they we were anticipating a decline. However, there is a higher tax rate that will be going into effect on the gas tax in next fiscal year, which will offset. So we expect it to be somewhat of a neutral impact. And then we do anticipate a downturn with Measure A due to the sales tax component. And overall, we will continue to monitor all of our revenue streams, depending on how severe this crisis is and how long it takes to recover. There is some potential federal relief on the horizon. None of this is for certain yet, so I use the word potential to clarify. So the first area is the CARES Act. We have seen some of cities, some of the larger cities, over 500,000 population benefited from sort of the first allocation of CARES Act funding. There is an additional amount of 275 million that is in discussion for cities below 300,000. I believe that is part of the state budget discussion that is underway this evening. That money could be used to reimburse the city for COVID-19-related expenses.
A lot of states around the country are finding ways to spend that on behalf of the cities without consulting the cities. So they do something, they say, oh, that benefits you, so that's your that's your share.
That's very shocking.
Yeah. Who would have ever imagined that would happen? I don't know where we're headed in California. It's I'm on the board of the league, but I'm kind of giving up predicting what might happen with that.
So again, you know, in quotation marks, potential federal funds. We'll wait and see what happens with this. And again, it would be restricted to really reimburse the city only for COVID-19 directly, direct expenses.
You know, I did see an item earlier this year where Oak Grove was spending something they said they had gotten in COVID. They had a very specific dollar figure. And they're proposing a spend of that. I don't have an idea what it was.
I think the only one that I have seen on their agenda, because I've been in communication with the city manager, is the additional CDBG funding that they received.
Ah, okay, that.
So we have.
I was going to say the same thing.
They also received some additional allocation from the federal government on that.
The other.
Yes, David, I saw something saying, and I'm certain that that's how they tied it together in the Outgrowth Citizen.
Okay. I think I read the headline in the Citizen. That's about it.
The other potential federal relief funds that are in discussion is something called the SMART Act. It's $500 billion to be allocated to states. And overall, a third of that total funding must be allocated to local governments, 50/50 split between counties and cities, based on a population and revenue losses. And this funding source could be used to backfill lost revenues. So for any of those revenue sources where I predicted a decline, this could be a potential backfill for that if it were to come to fruition. So next steps, in closing, we have two resolutions before the City Council this evening. The first is a request to adopt a resolution that would amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget as described in this presentation. And the second is to adopt a resolution approving the full-time employee salary schedule for fiscal year 2021. Per my earlier comments, there would be no increases, there are no increases to employee salaries in the proposed salary schedule. It is on the agenda and for your approval to be in compliance with CalPERS requirements. So with that, oh, and the next steps, so that's what's before you this evening. And then the plan would be to return back to the City Council in September, both with a current fiscal year 2019, 20-year-end financial report. And then potentially to revisit the fiscal year 2021 budget and see if further budget amendments reductions might be required. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions, Council?
I have one comment.
Go ahead, Linda.
No, go ahead, Paul. Okay. No, just the reduction in capital expenditures. I don't have a quarrel with it, although I'm sorry to see the receptionist on the second floor go. But when we talk about reducing capital expenditures, and there was a note in there about IT, I know you all have thought about it, but let's make sure that the IT expenditure reduction does not affect our ability to continue to interface with our customers in the most technically enhanced way. So I'm thinking about billing permits, online permits, those kinds of things. And I know you've thought about that. We don't want to. My mom would say you don't want to cut off your nose to spite your face. Okay.
So, and just in response to that question, the projects, the IT-related projects that are currently underway, so for example, Councilmember Bud, you mentioned building permits. We do have a project, a current technology project underway to implement a new system for building permits. The funding for that has been already set aside. So this reduction would not impact any projects that are currently underway. This would only postpone future anticipated technology projects, but it would not impact anything that is currently being worked on.
Okay, super. Thank you, Kim.
Can you go back to that slide that shows the cuts, please?
There you go, Garrett.
Thank you. So our emergency fund, are we tapping that yet or no?
At this time, this budget is merely balancing our revenues and expenditures without looking to any of the reserve funds to balance the budget.
And Councilmember Gatewood, if I can just add to that comment. The one reason that we are recommending that not consider that at this point, because we are in early stages of this crisis, we don't really know what else may happen or what else may be coming. So, and like Ms. Duran mentioned, we are coming back in September for some additional discussion. Hopefully by then, we have more information, we have more updates about the status of the economy and the potential future outlook on our economy. So at this point, we think it's prudent not to consider that, that is not out of the picture. But I think we should have a more clear picture before before we go there.
I agree. I just want to make sure that our, we understand that the emergency fund was put there for this and not to try to hold it or show that we have a surplus this year. It, you know, like, we really want to make sure that this time, we actually, when we need to spend it, we spend it. Because, you know, laying off a bunch of people in the middle of the pandemic or unless we hit every, you know, if we were going to have to start cutting cops or anything like that, we'd want to look at that, that that nut is for this exact reason. It's the only reason to save, just to make sure the citizens can continue or services continue at the same high level. So what, let me go in, what projects are we thinking that are non-essential for IT?
So some of the future projects that we were anticipating included a capital project system that would, we don't have one currently. There was one to be put in place, so that would be postponed. In addition, an asset management system was being contemplated, that would be postponed. Our current system for asset management is still working. And so we felt comfortable that we could postpone those until we had a better sense of our finances.
Okay. The other flip side of that is now is actually an excellent time to roll stuff out because you're able to get in front of it, whereas a lot of people are taken away. So, okay.
I think, you know, it's noteworthy that we are moving ahead with two, at least two very significant IT projects. We, like Ms. Duran mentioned, the our EnerGov, which deals with the planning permitting, all the work that we are working on in code enforcement, that will stay on track. We also, just very recently, the City Council approved the upgrade of our finance system. So that's that project and that upgrade will also move forward. And that is a very significant project that will update, a fairly outdated system that we've had since incorporation.
Yeah, so we're also, that's the permitting system, correct?
That and also the finance system.
Right, right. So what would be, where, when do we hit the point where we're going to need to start, like, laying off employees or furloughing employees? What would that require?
At this point, we're not contemplating. At this point, we're not considering furloughs and layoffs. I think what we're proposing, what we're proposing to you tonight, we'll be able to give us the three about roughly about three over $3 million adjustment in the budget. And we will come back in September. Hopefully by then, we have more information, more data that we can discuss with you. And at that point, we can also discuss the possibility, if we feel like the budget hole or the budget gap will be greater than what we're anticipating, that could also be a discussion potentially for tapping into the reserves. But at this point, no layoffs or no furloughs are being contemplated.
Okay.
If I may, Garrett, just having been through a, an ugly recession that this one makes that one, you know, seem small sometimes. I think the important thing that we need to look at when we talk about our reserves is when we're talking about service level reductions. When, you know, when we're, when we're talking about, we can't afford the level of service that we have right now in code or in police, or even in road maintenance and things like that. When we get there and if we have a good path forward of, you know, we're, we're seeing, you know, revenue start to come back up but not fast enough, but we think by this time it will, therefore, if we expended this amount of money, we believe that we'll be back to a, you know, a level, the level of service that we want within a given amount of, within a predictable amount of time, then you can justify taking out your reserves. To just take out our reserves because we want to do projects that we don't have to do today, to me, that's not enough. But I think when we start talking about, you know, less patrols, less code, and a handful of other things, you know, less animal services, those types of questions, that's when you need to ask the question, but is it a wise expenditure? And can you justify the means to the end, which is, you know what the end is, and at some point, this is when we're going to recover, and this is how much it's going to take to get there. and this is how much it's going to take to get there. Right?
That's a good summary, I think. And, and the other thing we should add, maybe it's not really obvious, but, you know, we were in February in really good financial shape, and we were headed towards a sizable surplus. And so that alone, you know, that sort of buildup of, of resources sort of buffered the short-term impact for us.
Well, and I'll go one further. If you compare us to just about any municipality in this region, forget the rest of the state and other, and other states and regions, we were in a very envious place. And a lot of the things that are baked into that first slide, that this is what we have to pay for, and we don't have any choice, like revenue neutrality and a couple other things, like the number, the number of bullet points that other cities have in that slide make it very difficult to make the choices that we frankly aren't happy to make right now.
Right. Because you can imagine what's going to happen to pension liabilities on our surrounding jurisdictions that are getting hit hard currently. I mean, at all-time city revenue highs, they were getting hit hard with pension liabilities. Imagine what the next few years are going to look like for them.
Well, just think, if you look at our slide and, and, you know, Kim was, was pointing out, you know, the lack of return that we're going to get on our investments. That's the lack of return on the money we have in the bank, right? Imagine what happened to the stock market and to, to PERS and STIRS and all of the other ones, and the difference that, 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 that PERS, that the PERS fund can't pay to the, for retirement, that's all made up by the local government. So that's a huge hole to fill for a lot of these local governments. And, yeah, and it wasn't pretty before.
Bob?
Yeah. On the potential federal funds, are we talking about, they're still arguing in Washington DC about the second, is that what the SMART Act is? They're trying to argue on that. And we got that first one, and everybody was getting okay on that. And you got $1,200 each, and all that nonsense. What about this one right now? Is this what we're talking about on this CARES Act and the SMART Act, potential federal funds?
Correct. These are both potential. The CARES Act has been approved. It's at the state level, is my understanding, for discussions about how that could be allocated. The SMART Act, there was an earlier iteration called the HEROES Act, which stalled out. It then became the SMART Act. And my understanding is it's kind of at gridlock at this point, but there is a lot of desire, obviously, to continue to move something like this forward.
You know, as I was thinking, the, some of the things that were being discussed in the Senate, they were talking about possibly getting some of these things through. I just wanted to make sure, when I was looking at this, that we had the, we're still waiting for the agreement, if any, to come. And, you know, we're also talking about, you know, when we had our 20, 2005 and 2008, and everything hit like that, and all the homes, everything stopped. No new, new homes weren't being built and everything. We laid off, I think, like 16, 17 building inspectors from Rancho Cordova, either contract or personal, some of them were sent, because we didn't have anything for them to inspect, because the homes quit, you know. So right now, knock on wood, we're doing much better off on that. And so, yeah, I'm glad that we don't have to have that again, at least right now, anyway. And I hope by September, we can have some positive information to go through.
I think Councilmember McGarvey, at this point, we, the building, construction activities are moving forward, but we're also hearing that builders and developers are maybe considering to put certain projects on hold. Not quite known yet. I think they're very, very much, I think, they find themselves in the same situation as we do. It's a great deal of uncertainty. When would this pandemic come to an end? What's the long-term impact of, the financial and economic impact of it? So I think they're playing it like we are almost week by week. And we just, that's the reason that we're not able to give you with certainty the information related to our forecast for the next six months. We have to revisit this. Kim and her team do this on a daily basis, and, and we're very vigilant about what's going on. That's why we want to come back in September, because we may have information that we don't have today. So we have to be very vigilant.
Okay, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm reminded, comments by, by Garrett and Bob, 2007, 2008 is when my wife and I chose to tear down our house and rebuild it here in Rancho Cordova. And we got a heck of a deal, because all the builders and contractors were, were out of work and looking for anything to do. And so with that context, you know, as a city, with what Garrett just said, there might be opportunities in this to buy something, do something, build something, bid out something, that because we have some financial flexibility, other jurisdictions don't, that we can, we can get a good deal on. So I would, I would urge you to think about that and look at that.
Well, you know, think about the cost of the international bridge that we put over the canal.
Yeah.
And we saved, like, I don't know how many, few million dollars on that, because it's the same thing. We had the contractors looking for something to do. And that, you know, we saved on that. So we got that bridge in, and so, yeah, see what we can do on some of these, some of these things that will help us, help the citizens, help the businesses. And that's what we're looking for.
Maybe it's a good time to build the interchange. We got an extra $100 million laying around.
Not quite there yet, but it's.
All right. Anything else on this item?
So, Council, if I may just take a minute.
Sure.
I wanted to thank our finance team and also our leadership team. When we were looking at finding ways to reduce our expenses by over $3 million, it was a great collaborative process where we went through every item of work. And we've identified some items that could be delayed. And I, and make no mistake, that there would be an impact to some of the work, the level of service that we want to provide to the community. But we were able to find some ways to minimize and reduce that impact and be able to make these adjustments. And hopefully, we don't have to go much deeper than what we have. But if we do, we will certainly come with some options and some creative ways to deal with it. So thank you, team, for dropping.
All right. Anything else, Council, on that?
On the, on this motion, we're talking about adopting this resolution with the amendments, just like the postponement filling of vacant slash newly added positions, the second-floor reception remain closed, the, you know, some of those things are, that's part of this we're voting on right now on 12.3, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we have two resolutions in front of us. So if there's no other discussion, I'm open for a motion.
Well, then I would move that we adopt, number one, adopt the resolution amending the fiscal year 2020, 21 operating budget. Do these two separate, separate things?
I think we can do them together.
And then adopt the resolution approving full-time employee salary schedule for fiscal year 2020 and 2021.
All right. Motion made by McGarvey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry. Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Budge. Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McGarvey?
Aye.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Sorry. Vice Mayor Gatewood.
I'm Mayor Gatewood.
Yeah, apparently when I was out of the room, I was demoted.
And Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to council requests for future agenda items, and I have one. I was contacted by a gentleman who was involved in a process to decriminalize youth possession of tobacco products. And I'll put that on to Cyrus and Kate Adams, our police chief. And Kate came back with a very enthusiastic yes, that that was something we need to do, in part because state law had gone there. And this eliminates some complications for youth, particularly, and may enhance enforcement. You apparently couple that sort of a reform with a citywide ban on the sale of flavored tobacco products. And so those are products primarily designed to appeal to kids. So you officially ban the sale, and you decriminalize the juvenile possession of those products at the same time. So I thought that is probably, in the context we're currently in, that's probably worthy of discussion. But I'm curious as to what my colleagues would, would think about that.
David, I know I brought up a little while ago the fact that, you know, the last time that we talked about tobacco products and vaping products, we were under the assumption that the FDA and, and the federal administration were, were going to act in some kind of meaningful way. And I know we all got an email from the, from Reed, California, I think, talking about how, like, what they actually did was far less than what they had threatened to do. So I think, yeah, I think it's a great idea. And, and, you know, and I also think it's showing that we're thinking about the ramifications of our incident, too, right? And, and the fact that there, there is some policy solutions to, to what came of that.
Right.
So no, I think, I think it's a great idea. And I think it also continues to put us at the forefront of the tobacco and e-cigarette and vaping policies as far as health. Because, you know, we were the first one around here to do a lot of these things. And I think it's high time to, to step it up again.
All right. Any other opinions?
Mayor, we did take a quick look at that issue, and we are also quite enthusiastic about working on it. I think that there may be a strong component for development as well, in the, in the work and dialogue about outreach and following up and that sort of things, that sort of thing as well.
Is that something that we were looking at at the next meeting, or something past that?
No, no, it'll take a little bit longer.
I, I would think this is, this would be a great opportunity if we can fit it in for a workshop, to have a little bit longer of a conversation than just, than just an item to vote on. David, I had.
I think the proponents are certainly amenable to appearing in front of us or discussing us, discussing this with us at length.
I think realistically, this could potentially be in August timeframe for, for discussion.
Okay. Yeah. Well, with July coming up, and we normally don't do a whole lot in July, even though with everything else going on, we probably will be, but we don't tend to have a lot of meetings as well.
Yeah, there's the potentially important items in July.
So that's two of us officially. Anybody else interested in that?
Yeah, do it.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Okay. We're up to four, I think. Bob just said yes as well, I think. All right. Okay. Donald, did you say you had something else?
Yeah. I know, I believe it's the city of Sacramento that's working on it, and we've, a lot of us have been approached about it. As we start to see restaurants reopening, one of the things that we've noticed is what I will just say is price gouging of delivery services for food delivery. And I think we need to look at what options we have within our power to reduce the amount of cost that our restaurants are having to pay in order for these delivery apps to function in our city. And so, and, and on that timeframe, I'd like to see us do something, hopefully at least consider something sooner than August, if, if possible. And hopefully, there are some models out there of enacted policies and legislation that we might be able to just use.
I'm curious about that one. I mean, I've certainly seen prices go up, but it would seem it's a free market scenario. There isn't a limit on participation here, unless there's some governmental restriction in that city that limits who can, who can provide the service.
So what I'm talking about is, is for a lot of, what, what you order on Grubhub and you see the six bucks, or, and then a $5 service fee or something that you see on there, you're not seeing the full cost of that. And a lot of that's being formed by the restaurants. And a lot of these apps, you know, have chosen during this time of crisis to, to add to the costs even, to where you're seeing 30, 40% markup or, or taking of your bill from the restaurant, not just, not just on the person that's actually getting the delivery. So region business has been doing a lot of work in this space. The city of Sacramento, I believe, is looking at a 15% cap on the fee. I don't know if that's the answer, or if it's a different number. But there is a lot of movement around the fact that, that these apps, even during these times of crisis, when they were making so much more money than they ever have in, in the past, to not consider any kind of discretion as far as helping our restaurants survive.
I know restaurants who have.
And again, I don't.
Three or four different options for, for delivery. It's actually a little confusing in some cases. There's so many options for delivery.
Yeah, there's, there's probably, I think I was at Rubio's and I counted 10 different signs.
Wow.
Yeah. They have it all set up where the table's in the front, and people can come and get it. And some of them can make that work, but a lot of the, the ones that have had to switch to, to doing this, I mean, you're talking massive amounts of fees have come out. And again, I don't know what the solution is. I just think we need to talk about it. And soon, before we lose a lot of restaurants.
Mike is at the back of the room here. Do you have any, any insight on this, Micah?
And we should be careful about getting too far into the weeds here. I just want to talk about it, not unpack it tonight.
Good afternoon.
I'm down. Let's talk about it.
Mayor and Council, we, we have had some conversations with our local restaurants about this issue that, that has arisen. And so we, we've kind of had some of those conversations already. But that's really where, where we've been so far.
Okay. Are there three parties interested in pursuing this?
Sure. Why not?
All right. There's one more.
I'm interested. Do it.
All right. There's three.
I mean, don't stop. Mike, keep on going.
Okay. Anything else, Council? If not, Cyrus?
You know, Council, we typically go dark for the second meeting in July. Given that we have a number of issues that we need to discuss, and we have a fairly long list of items, is there a problem to, and since also not too many people are traveling, would it be okay with the Council if we restored the second meeting in July and have a, have a regular council meeting on July 20th?
I've got no objection to that.
I think it'd be okay. As you said, not many people are, are traveling on the long distance. So, yeah, I think it would be.
I, I'd be, it'd be fine with it.
Thank you.
Even if they did travel with remote access, it's gotten a lot easier than it used to be.
Okay. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, we are going to adjourn to a closed session. Actually, we're going to keep this meeting live on Zoom, as I understand it. We'll come back after our closed session, make announcements about closed session. But other than that, we're going to adjourn to a closed session at this point. Thank you all very much.